Howdy, everybody. Today is Tuesday, March twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-four. The time is five thirty P M. We're here for the regular session of the Copel City Council. We do have a quorum present, so I'm calling the meeting to order. We will be convening into executive session in the first floor conference room. At the end, at the end of the executive session, I will come out and announce that we're moving into work session,
Basically, we're saying, I understand, it's probably pretty important to us, but uh no parts add, cuts, X times, there are no parts I go and then go up to it. But yeah, so what Charles just said with with the process. You know, why, if you put the no parts in the inventory after it's been? So, you know, you have, you can show what it is. You see that really most of the money goes, well, that would be described. And their and their nine three, yeah, their, and their contracts are structured on annual review basis. They're very complicated, not only the fuel charge and the TPI tax charge, but there's also a rate. So if you have to retire the gate, there's there's all the services, they can, they can deliver them like a ton. See that these, so they can go along and make your first year, but other one, how about that? So, do you guys have any studies or explanations suggesting that the community is going to jet out of this place? Option to, to work and sort of just put out of its way, give it the, and the car and, I don't know. So, you know, like if we reject, we say, when there's like, where you look, situations of value in the right way, the car. The truth, the situation, they think of value in the last one. So, here are the reasons I'm showing the value, and kind of the secrets of the plan, for our city. But what's more, is why I ask somebody to be paying for the cash, and when it comes first thing, that they came over and helped them. But it's a clue, Jerry, probably, that that shouldn't be a matter for some of you guys anymore. So, do you want to think how much after, what's the issue, like, so, and then, and then, and then?
But we need to have these steps, though, like, as how much?
I don't, I don't usually know. I don't see that this. Yeah, okay. So, interestingly, having this face in the moment for that fact, and public trust, and it's something, so this I live on, uh, and, uh, I have to drive, you know, and take my cell phone, so it's been using this. And there, there are different ways to attack it, and that's part of what we were exploring, too. We do have a mandate, so this isn't for law, so if I respect anything in the body, we'll need to know in this room that we gotta do all of them, because if we don't, then it's gonna have a structure process. So, the next time it comes to you, they'll be talking to you about, okay, this, this is the top, right? In terms of what's on our top for our services, this is one of those PMI problems, in that every street has a little different value, little bridges, so you just look at their charge, you take your six, I don't know, people are charged, because doing that to understand, like, the, the natural thing, being, like, a, so the bottom line is really gonna say, let's go for a couple of hours. And, I mean, for the long haul, that's not true, whereas when we're dealing with solid, uh, so, for example, early days, sixty years ago, we'd be building solid, they'd pick up, they have ground trucks, they have their own grounds, they have their own trees, have to charge thirty-five dollars a month to let down, and that area, and that's, oh, France was their own land goal. Well, unfortunately, their land goal has been a lot in about thirty years, for their current estate, and they didn't charge for the, the, the losses, or whatever. For their citizens, so that you, if they're having to charge now, because they got, they're alive, it's their land goal, they have to take part, and then Sweden should even start to escalate, and stop looking on the other end, which, they have a wonderful deal, but they're a little C N D. Apparently, year to year basis, that they're up to ninety, that's C N D, and most management. So, you know, we can develop that, and in the middle of the time, up to a year, your cost, and then the future, and that's what Capel's coming back for. You know, so like I said, every student, that is, is a unique situation, and there is absolutely no value, that there's a bypass. I mean, there's, there's somewhere still up, but they're not, they're not, and so, it's, it's, we all like to be often, not one feature. We, you know, the joint, uh, patient, so, who answers the question, we decide, uh, and you can go back, and they can say, you were so bad. Yeah, because ever since now, I haven't yet to say that, but now that I get back to saying, and I'm gonna say two, another week, um, it was very different, I think, in price, pay, well, it was two times a week, and, uh, grass, it's its own, so it picked up, and, uh, how long does it take? That's gonna cost you the best, okay? Now, if you're willing to do something a little bit different, then we're gonna do it, and we'll look at that menu, and say, you know, the dollar difference, or the dollar fifty difference, and not having that third, it's a lot of money.
See what kind of rate they, an aggregator can get as opposed to the standard R E P just through Texas choice.
Yes.
Then they, they, they can do that. They don't have to, we don't have to have to deal with I-chooser for us if it is to participate in the aggregate market.
To my knowledge.
No.
Can you?
Yeah.
The John.
Thank you for the presentation. What percentage of the residents are using I-chooser?
Well, if we take a, if you look at their, this attachment in the, in the packet, it, it lists a number of 1,312 households have opted in and selected a plan as a result of an I-chooser auction. And I think we've got somewhere in the neighborhood of 11,000 households. So the math there, the, the quick and dirty math there, about 10%.
So they can continue to use them, correct?
Um.
They will.
Can you, they meaning the residents?
Residents.
Or they use I-chooser?
Right.
So let's just say if I'm one of those 1,300 households, the council action tonight doesn't impact my electric rate, it doesn't impact the contract that I have right now. There is no impact to any of the residents of Capel.
Okay.
Outside of, right, so.
Okay.
John?
So, what is it?
It's not a gateway.
Okay.
So I just want to say that one of the issues that I found this is that there, there's a false impression that the city is actually endorsing I-chooser when we're actually not doing it. And, you know, some of the, like Jim was talking about, some of the sophisticated residents, they could go on there and look and so on and find a rate. But when they see Capel, Capel City logo with I-chooser, they're all, they're automatically thinking that the city is endorsing them without even having to check, and they're thinking they're already getting the cheapest rate, which a lot of sometimes is true, but sometimes it's not true. So we don't want, I think it's, it's a bad idea to give that kind of impression to the residents that with having our city logo, which again, to a lot of them, it seems like we're endorsing that supplier as to be the best rate.
Kevin?
And I, I thought I heard you say this earlier, but I want to confirm, there's no other situation like, like this we haven't, like, we don't endorse, or like, we don't have this type of relationship with any other private company or utility or provider or anything like that. So this is unique to this situation. Okay, thank you.
Mark?
Yeah. Now, I was on the council when we adopted this. When you go to EnergyOgre or any other website where you can choose your own plans and you can look at them side by side, you have to have some amount of knowledge about how much you're using per month, what kind of brackets you're going to fall in. I mean, I, I keep track of every month of how much I use and I have for the past 10 years. So I know my usage and I know where I fall, so it's very easy to go find the right price. Because, you know, if you go over, then you're charged more per kilowatt hour. These are fixed numbers that come back from I-chooser and I, and the other council members felt it was a service almost to people who were just not that savvy when it comes to, you know, the internet and, and doing that kind of analysis. Now, you don't necessarily get the best price available, but it's generally going to be better than just randomly rolling ice and going with any provider. So I felt comfortable supporting it and I still do. People don't have to sign up for it and that's what I, I like about it. So, you know, I would continue to support it.
I was also on the council and I, everything Mark said was absolutely true. It was not an endorsement of the program, it was a service that was being offered to our citizens. I've signed up, I've used it every year since and I've saved my, I, I don't have to track my monthly usage and I don't have to be that worried about getting in the weeds with it, but I know that I'm getting myself, quite honestly, I've looked around, it's the best rate I can get. So I've been very happy. I'm a little disappointed to see the change in narrative, so, because that was not, you know, that was not what we were set up to do originally.
Yeah.
So, you know, keep that in mind. It was not a, it was not an endorsement, it was a service offered. And like Mark said, it's very difficult to go find a cooperative that will give you a lower rate that's negotiated on your behalf, which is the service that they provide, so.
But just to make the point, they could still use, choose to use I-chooser if they want to. It's not, us not allowing them to use the logo doesn't prevent them from providing the service to the residents.
Understand. And I plan to continue to use them.
Which is fine, but.
If you don't know about them, then you wouldn't, you wouldn't use them.
Yeah, but the perception you're giving is what really matters, right? Because people think, oh, the city is endorsing, automatically think that, but that's not the case though.
Okay, we may have beat the dead horse here.
Were we compensated for this?
No, we were not.
So there's no cost to terminate either, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
All right, we're welcome to, to pull this as a separate line item, should anybody choose. Do we have any other questions about agenda items?
Mr. Wu will be here, the I-chooser rep will be here for the meeting. Well, he won't be here, here.
He's online.
He's there.
Oh, there he is.
Oh, yes, I did.
Mark?
I'd like to pull item C and vote on it separately. This is about putting a silicone coating on the TPO roof that is at the senior center. Two waterproofing slash roofing consultants that I work with and have worked with for years, they highly recommend against this. When we're looking at a roof that is 14 years old, typical life for a TPO roof is 15 to 20 years. So we're getting to that kind of end of life. So the thought is by doing the silicone coating that you extend the life further, but there's some catch to that. And one is it generally starts to peel off after five years. Now, if you look, there's warranty information from the manufacturer, which is longer, but there's also the installer that only warranties it for two years. The key to this whole thing is prep of the roof and you've got to get it completely clean, wash it off with a power washer, and you've got to get all the dirt off. And if you don't, if there's any water or, or any dirt, then that gives a point for delamination of the silicone. And the, the money that we would spend, I think is just, you know, pouring money down a rattle. And we just, we should replace the roof when it needs to be replaced and not just do a stopgap to try to get a few extra years because it is not going to be successful based upon the input from two very knowledgeable consultants, so.
So this is number C?
Six.
Seventy-five thousand dollars?
Yeah.
So when we, when we call it the considered agenda, anybody that's wishing to pull item like C will please speak up at that point.
Okay. We'll ask questions at that time.
Yes, you may. Any other questions on the agenda? Seeing none, we are, the time is 7:39 and we will, we're at the end of the work session, we'll move into the council chambers for the regular session. Good evening, everybody. We're still waiting for a quorum to arrive. One, two, three, four, five. The time is 7:43 PM and we're, we've ended our work session and we're beginning the regular session of the Capel City Council. As a reminder, any persons wishing to speak to our citizens' appearance or the public hearings must sign the appropriate register located outside the council chambers and list your home address. Tonight, we have Elder Benyon from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints to give our invocation, and then we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance, so please remain standing. Elder Benyon?
Sorry, my bad, I'm not used to this. All right. Dear Father, we thank thee for this wonderful day and the chance to be able to be here and the chance to be around such wonderful people. We thank thee for Mayor Mays and his councilmen and the people on the council. We, we thank thee for the chance to be able to continue to live and prosper in such an amazing land, and we thank thee for all the joy that we can receive as we try to grow closer to thee. And we ask thee to, to allow this meeting to, to flow smoothly and to allow peace to be in this room. Please help us to continue to try our best to grow and to find peace in all that we do. And we, we thank thee for all the joy that we have and that we can receive in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much and be seated. Tonight, we have a proclamation for the Assistance League and I'd like to ask Bobby King and her crew to come join me in the front.
I brought a crew.
You did? I was good. A good crew.
I heard we were students.
And I got to apologize, you guys had asked me to come out to your event and present there and just due to scheduling, we couldn't do that, so thank you for being here tonight.
We're happy to be here tonight.
All right. So whereas the Assistance League of Capel was established in 1999 and chartered as a part of the National Assistance League in 2000, is being recognized by the Frisco Rough Riders as an outstanding nonprofit, and they would like to support, and whereas the Assistance League of Capel is committed to supporting Capel Independent School District, youth, families and senior citizens of Capel with activities, clothing, personal hygiene, and addressing food insecurities and providing drug testing kits to parents and guardians, and whereas the Assistance League of Capel mentors youth philanthropy through the Assistance, Assistines of Capel since 2019, and whereas the Frisco Rough Riders is recognizing the Assistance League of Capel at the Frisco Rough Riders Game on April 13th, 2024, and donating a portion of proceeds to support the Assistance League of Capel's philanthropic programs. And there, now for I West Mays, Mayor of the City of Capel, do recognize Saturday, April 13th, 2024, as the Assistance League of Capel Day. In witness thereof, I've set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Capel to be affixed as 26th day of March, 2024. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And, and, and in addition to that, I would like to invite all citizens to come out to the game and support, and I'm sure you have a little something to say on that?
Yes. There's a special QR code that is on our website, or you can say Assistance League of Capel at Rough Rider Game, a $15 ticket, because section 103 needs to be filled by Capel people, because that's where they're going to recognize Capel, and we don't have enough members to fill it. But we have 100 tickets and we'd like to sell 99, because if 100 sold, the president has to throw out the first ball, and I know for a fact she can't throw. So check our website out, I have some little cards I can leave, and hope to see you at the Rough Rider Game. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Council, hang on. Councilmember Walker, I think you had something to say.
I just wanted to say, you know, the Assistance League of Capel is such a well-established part of the fabric of this community, and you do so much to make this a better place to live, and on behalf of everyone in town, I just want to thank all of you for all that you do. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
I'm just going to do it down here to save time. Item number seven is a presentation from, of an award from the Salvation Army to the mayor and city council. Lieutenant Cody Johns to present. Haven't seen you since sometime in November or so.
I know, it's been a while, hasn't it?
Sir?
Good evening, how are y'all doing today? My name is Lieutenant Cody Johns and I even wanted to come here and just say first, say thank you so much for going out and ringing the bell. I hope you all had fun. I know when I went by and visited a couple of times, y'all were smiling, laughing, it was actually a beautiful day, so couldn't complain about that. I wanted to say what y'all did, because I love Capel, my kids go to Capel, so I was rooting for y'all, even though I'm in the Salvation Army of Irving, so just don't tell anybody that, okay? But, you know, we get to help out all the surrounding communities around Irving, and we couldn't have done that without your help. And y'all raised $782.89 in that day, so thank you. Thank you, thank you from the bottom of my heart, because those funds come straight back, and to be able to help the surrounding communities helps our Boys and Girls Club that we have. So we couldn't have done this without you. So we had this little bell made, it says the City of Capel, 2023 Mayoral Challenge from the Salvation Army, and we pray and hope that you will do this again next year and see if we can beat Irving. Thank you so much.
So I take it this means we're going to be getting another invite in November this year?
Yes, yes. Thank you all.
Thank you very much, Lieutenant. Thank you. Sorry about that. Item number eight is our citizens' appearance. Persons wishing, wishing to speak must sign the register and list your home address. Presentations by individuals shall be limited to two minutes each. At the end of the two minutes time, the individual may request an additional two minutes with the majority of the council members present. Person signed up to speak will be called in the order that they signed up. No personal attacks by any speaker shall be made against any member of the council, mayor, individual, group or corporation. There will be no comments or deliberations from the city council due to the Texas Open Meetings Records Act. Once the timer sounds at two minutes, the city secretary will cut in and make the request to the mayor and the council if they would like to extend the speaker's time for an additional two minutes. We do have a number of people signed up to speak tonight, and the first one to sign up was Lynn Pence, and Ms. Pence?
Hi, do you want me to?
The.
This one?
The tall one.
And you can bring it.
And state your name and address, please.
My name is Lynn Pence, 717 South Capel Road. So I'm here tonight to ask the city to allow reserved parking spaces on weekdays in front of our business in Old Town. Our business is located on Houston Street east of George Coffee Shop. George is very popular and their customers take up a lot of the parking in Old Town. There is plenty of parking all around George, the problem is, the first place people go to park when they go to George is along Houston Street in front of the three businesses east of George. Those spots fill up early morning and are full all day. People going to George tend to stay there for hours. As soon as parking spots open up, one is, they're immediately taken by someone else. Houston Street east of Main Street only has parking on one side of the street. Houston Street west of Main Street has parking on both sides of the street, plus a large public parking lot. Allowing our business reserved parking spaces does not affect George's customers or anyone else. Not allowing reserved parking in front of our business does negatively affect our business. The 15-minute parking sign the city has offered does not work as it is not enforceable. All of us pay taxes and for one business to be able, be able to dominate the parking is really not fair to the rest of us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The second speaker tonight, and I am not going to be sure on the last name, is Pam Montgomery Fritz?
Whoa, Fitz.
Fitz, okay, I'm sorry.
That's all right, I'm a doctor, so you can't read my handwriting.
I wasn't going to say anything.
That's okay, my husband will say it for you.
Name and address, please.
It's Pam Montgomery Fitz, and I'm at 454 Houston Street in Old Town, Capel. So as I said, I'm Pam Montgomery Fitz, my practice is revitalizing pet care. I house in the Old Town Holistic Pet Center that is right next door to George, so I'm a neighbor to Lynn, okay? And then, then we have Michelle Broadhurst, who is also with Rehab for Pets. Now, last week I sent you an email regarding our concerns for the parking of Old Town, and I'm not going to rehash that, because you've got it on file and you, and I'd ask that you re, re, that you reference, excuse me, while considering my request. Now, there are four medical practices in Old Town, Capel, there are two pet practices and three human practices. There are three of the practitioners tonight here together. Now, in all three of us, we all differ in what we do, but we do have commonalities. Number one, we are all individually owned and we are independent of any corporation, which means we are patient-centric. That follows the whole Old Town, Capel community guidelines there, or the community effort there. And so essentially, when we, what we do is we specialize in specific, I can't believe I'm not talking very well today, but sorry about that. We have specialized practices, so very few in DFW do what we do to the extent that we do it, and our business models closely align with the concept and the culture of Old Town, Capel, where our focus is community and community access. Now, we are all struggling with patient parking, no matter where we are in Old Town. Now, it's true that all businesses have the, some special needs patients or special needs people that come in, but medical practices have a higher percentage of medical necessary high special needs. And our patients, the pet patients, don't have access to handicap parking, so they can't get that little tag, and they need a lot of help there. So Dr. Michelle will be talking about what they need. Now, since COVID, as you know, our ability to work from home or actually remotely has gone way up, in fact, it's tripled. And so unfortunately, what that means is all the, the coffee shops are completely overrun with a lot of people who are working, and good for them. But the challenge is, is that when people, like Lynn said, go into George, they don't come out. And we did use one of those 15-minute parking signs at the very beginning, it doesn't work. They still stay in there for four hours, it's insane. So the thing is, is that, here's the real problem. If we don't have access to parking in our special, with our special needs patients, then it will have to, a very detrimental effect on our businesses and we will be forced to go elsewhere. I have one quick thing, just let me finish if you don't mind. What I'd love to see is a sign, I'm sorry, is that okay? What I'd love to see is some consideration for medical practices, and what I'm asking is a sign that says medical practice, parking only, give specific hours, eight to five Monday through Friday, then, then give away all of the parking to the community after hours in the weekends when you need it the most. And then that doesn't necessarily show favoritism to one practice, what it does is show that you are very community-minded and that you are looking to make sure that the community's needs and healthcare needs are met. Thank you for giving me extra time.
Thank you very much for your comments tonight. Our third speaker is Michelle Branhurst.
Thank you so much for listening to me today. I own a practice called Rehab.
Name and address, please.
Oh, sorry, Michelle Broadhurst, 454 Houston Street, Capel. So I own a practice called Rehab for Pets, and really, the name is exactly what we do. So we rehabilitate pets that have mobility and functional and structural health issues. So 95% of my patients have an inability to walk. So you may even have seen them around George's Coffee Shop, they will run around in, in wheelchairs, and we have a lot of patients that are actually, cannot even walk more than four or five steps, and are in our program, so they will have a higher quality of life. So it's not only challenging for the pets themselves, it's really challenging for their owners. So we have some pets that are in the 100, 100-pound categories. So to ask the human clients to actually be able to move these pets effectively when we don't have any parking is incredibly, incredibly challenging. A perfect example today is we have little Coco Cameron, they are locals here in Capel, and her mom, she's a paralyzed bulldog, and her mom has to bring her in. And Kathy's only about 100 pounds, sopping wet, and she's really struggles to even bring Coco in from the car. So I really appeal to all of you to think about not just the impact that this has on our pet community, but on the people who own these pets and love them, in so many cases more than themselves. So if we can't help these pets, that's a serious demise for them and also for the people who love them. So I really encourage you to, to take what we said to heart, because like Dr. Montgomery Fitz was saying, we're not looking for a massive exception, but we're really trying to serve the community where they need to be served, and we're really not asking for a lot, just a little bit of a potential change to the current laws, so that we can help these clients and these pets accordingly, as well as the rest of the medical community. So thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Charlene Gandette.
Hi, I'm Dr. Charlene Gode, 529 Houston Street. So I am actually on the west side of George. I am between Tangerine Salon, Tangerine Salon, and then we have George. So we do have parking on both sides and we have the big overflow, which works for a lot of patients. However, I have a human rehab, so I'm at Resiliency Brain Health, so all of our patients are neurologically challenged when we're at the other. The first half of our day are exclusively for veterans. So we have a lot of disabled veterans that come in. The wheelchair parking is at the end of Tangerine and at the end of Tangerine down there, but we don't actually have any in the center. So if those two handicaps happen to be open, that's great, but if they're not, then we're looking for parking elsewhere. So it would be nice if we had one or two for the people that can manage to get there without a wheelchair, but just needing some extra assistance. without a wheelchair but just needing some extra assistance. If we had two closer to the building. So not necessarily putting in new handicap, but just giving us a little bit of access for these veterans to get in and out a little bit easier. Okay? The rest of the day, the afternoon, is also for neurologically rehabbing our civilian patients. So we do have a lot of people coming in in wheelchairs then as well, but our primary is veteran health. So thanks for listening, and I look forward to hopefully seeing some of you guys around Capel.
Thank you for your comments tonight. We have no other speakers signed up tonight, so we're going to move on to item number nine, which is our consent agenda. The consent agenda is routine in nature and is generally enacted in a single motion. These items have been previously approved through the budget or past council actions. Any item may be pulled and considered separately, and full descriptions are available on the screens. Do we have any items to be pulled from the consent agenda? Councilmember Hill?
Yes, I'd like to pull item C.
C? C is in Charlie?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other items?
And item J.
And item J. That would be I-chooser?
Yes.
All right. So we will be talking about item C and J after we deal with the consent agenda? Do I have a motion on the consent agenda items A, B, D through I and K? Councilmember Carroll?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve item 9A, B, D, E, F, G, H, I, K.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councilmember—Mayor Protium John? Sorry about that. All in favor?
Walker, Carroll, Nevils, John, Matthew Hill in favor. None opposed. The motion carries.
Thank you. All right. Item number C is consider approval toward TIPS Contract 2310402 to Next Gen Construction for Repair Recoding of the Flat Roof at Grapevine Springs Community Center in the amount of $75,000 as budgeted in the IMF Fund and authorizing the city manager to sign any necessary documents. Mr. Shore?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Steve Shore. I'm the city's facilities manager. I would be happy to answer any questions you have about item C, or do you want me to go over basically what it is first?
Why don't you give us a preview of what it is?
Okay. It's a recode of the roof at the senior center. Basically, the contractor will be coming in, cleaning the roof, pressure washing it, making sure it's all prepped, and then at that point, they would go and make any individual repairs to seams or any punctures. And once they've completed that, at that point, they would give it a coat of a silicone topping, and then after that dries, they would come back and do a second coating. This would extend the life of the roof for another 15 years.
All right. Thank you. Council, any questions? Councilmember Hill?
Yeah, I guess what—the manufacturer has specific requirements for maintaining their warranty. Do you know what those are?
No, I don't have the specifics. It's something I could find out, but it's just basically, once it's prepared and placed on properly, any warranty beyond that would be—we would have to just maintain it and watch for leaks and check and look for any type of issues and keep them informed of it. There is no specific items that you have to do, no treatments or cleaning. It's just mainly observing it and making sure that everything's performing as it should.
Okay. So the—one of the key things you said there was that, you know, the roof had to be properly prepped before the application of silicone coating. I work with waterproofing consultants, and I have two that I've worked with for years. And the manufacturers will look for several things to void their warranty, and you will not get that extension of life that we're promised. Typically, silicone application like that will only last five years because the surface prep is so critical. You know, you can't have any water on it. You can't have any kind of dirt because that will cause a delamination. And then they also look for any areas where there might be standing water. And that's pretty—it can be—it's pretty evident where it occurs because you get discolorization of the roof. So based upon input from my waterproofing consultants that I've worked with, they do not recommend spending this kind of money on a roof that's 14 years old when the typical lifespan for a TPO roof is 15 to 20 years, because the installer only warranties it for two years. After that, it's typically going to be in the five-year range that you see that delamination of the silicone. So consequently, I think that we would just be spending money where we shouldn't. We should let it get to its end of life and replace the whole roof, not just try to extend it, because it's not going to get the results that we hope to achieve. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Have Councilmember Matthew and then Mayor Protium John.
Thank you, Mayor. Question for you. I just heard from Councilmember Hill, it's 14 years old, the roof?
That's correct.
So when we install, what was the warranty, or how long will last this original roof?
It's a 20-year warranty on the roof.
And you also mentioned here it says requires repair. What type of repair?
It's had some hail strikes and some other things. It's mainly—there isn't really any specific repair, like there's not a water leak in it right now. What they would do is they would go through and check, like the seams and any small penetrations, any hail strikes, and they would do a coating on that of the proper material before they do the silicone.
Okay. By applying this—this new coating, will we get any discount from insurance company?
From insurance company? No.
We don't?
No. It's the same as if we put a new roof on, we won't get any discount for that either.
So the coating one and two will cost $75,000?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mayor Protium?
Thank you, Mayor. Do you know what the cost of replacing the roof will be if we were to go ahead and replace them?
Currently, the estimate was between $175,000 and $225,000, and that'll go up by percentage each year.
Okay. And then you did mention that it might or it will extend the life of the roof for about 15 years, you said?
Yes, sir.
But is that a—is there a warranty, guarantee, or something, if we did put the coating on there?
Yes, there's a manufacturer warranty on the coating itself, and like Councilmember Hill said, there's a two-year warranty by the installer for anything that they've done.
Okay. That's all I've got right now.
All right. Thank you. Council, any other questions? C. Councilmember Carroll?
Thank you, Mayor. Quick question. So if this wasn't approved, the alternative would—I guess, what would be next steps for facilities?
Next step is we would get a budget number and come back and put it in the five-year forecast.
For the full roof?
Yeah, and then come back and do the full roof.
Would the full roof need to be replaced right now, or it would just be put somewhere in the next two or three years down the road or something?
To do the full roof right now. I just—the issue right now is I don't have the money in my current budget. I would have to—
Plan for—
Plan for it.
Full roof replacement. And with this treatment or this seal length, then the idea would be theoretically as much as 15, 15 years. That's what we would hope for.
Correct. Yes, and I'm still having to put the roof in the five-year forecast for the budget, but this would give us time to push it down the road, sort of say, for a little while.
Okay. Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Nevils?
Thank you, Mayor. You said that, you know, there were some hail strikes and things like that, but you did say that the roof is currently performing.
Correct. Currently, we have no leaks. We have had leaks in it, but we've made the repair to the specific leak spot, not to the overall roof.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mayor Protium John?
Thank you, Mayor. Last time, the exhibit that we're looking at, the area of completed refurbishment—the—I don't know if you're looking at the exhibits?
Yes, we did refurbishment of the middle—
The metal roof, right.
Yeah, the majority of the roof is a metal roof, and then the areas, like where the air conditioning is and where the different sections come together, there's a flat roof.
Right. At that time, if I remember correctly, those were replaced because we did have some hail damage previously.
Correct. We did the refurbishment because of hail strikes had gone through the coating on the metal, and we were starting to get rust spots.
And the other roof that we're talking about now, they're from the same hail damages at that time, or is this something new?
Yes, the hail doesn't affect the TPO roof as greatly as it does the middle roof, and at the time, they were—it was budgeted to just do the refurbishment of the middle roof because of the rust and other issues that it was starting to show.
But it was from the same hail storm that we had?
Yes, and we've had three major hail storms during this time and several minor ones throughout the years.
And if we weren't—I think Councilmember Carroll mentioned this—if we did not do the recoding at this time, it's not like we're going to need a replacement next year or anything like that, right? We still have the lifespan left in it?
Yes, we have—I would say confidently that we have five years left in that roof.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Hill, would you like to make a motion?
Certainly. I'd like to make a motion to approve item C.
Right. Have a motion to approve item C. Do I have a second? Councilmember Carroll, second. Any other further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Carroll, Nevils, opposed. Walker, John, Matthew Hill, the motion fails.
Thank you very much. Moving on. Item number 9J. This is consider a resolution of the City of Capel, Texas terminating, ceasing, and closing its affiliation with I-chooser LLC and authorizing the mayor to sign. Ms. Leach?
Thank you, Mayor. Would you like me to go through a brief?
Please.
Thank you. So in July of 2020, the city council entered into the current agreement with I-chooser. This agreement was to allow I-chooser to operate in the city of Capel, and the service that they were providing to our community was to assist residents in the selection of retail electric provider plans. So back in the late '90s, the retail—the electric industry was deregulated. One of the consequences and outcomes of that was that the selection of plans and the variety of plans that were offered created some confusion around which plan would be best for me. And so there are many aggregators like I-chooser who—their sole purpose is to help customers identify the best plan for them, and that is based on an auction that they do. So they aggregate customers, and then they go to the market to solicit bids for that market. And so we have been engaged with I-chooser for several years now. At this time, this is in front of the council for a couple reasons. So the first is, as part of our partnership with I-chooser, the city—I-chooser uses the city logo. The city participates and lists I-chooser on the city website, and we do use some of the city's marketing arm to also encourage participation and make sure that there's awareness around this option for residents for the city of Capel. So one of our concerns is just around the brand integrity and allowing and lending the city's logo, reputation, and credibility to be used by a private entity for the purpose of a for-profit business. The second reason that we have brought this before the council for consideration is just around the long-term viability of the program itself. As I mentioned before, there are a number of aggregators in the state of Texas. As we have gotten into the third or fourth year of the program, participation is trending in a downward trajectory, which is not to say that there is no participation. It is just trending in a downward trajectory. So there's a number of factors that are likely contributing to this, and the primary one is likely that the folks who are most interested in participating have already done so, and they have locked in a—they've locked in a new electric plan and then therefore do not have a need for the current auction. And so as we see that kind of working its way through the market, that is, I think, one of the reasons that we are seeing that trend. And the last reason is around—we do have a concern around what the continuing service level will look like. I-chooser is an international company, and some of their operation is shifting out of the Texas market, which is not to say that they do not have representation in the Texas market. So Fred Wu, who is our rep, is, I believe, on the call, and so he is based in Austin, so there is the Texas presence for I-chooser. But we do have some concern around what is the future of the service levels that we'll be receiving on behalf of the residents. I will say that the—should council decide to terminate our agreement with I-chooser, it would not impact any of the customers who have already participated in an auction and selected a plan through that auction. So you are locked in then, and that relationship is with the customer and the retail electric provider, not with the customer and I-chooser. And so those plans are not affected. Customers can opt into, participate in I-chooser today, whether the city of Capel has this agreement in place or not. And on top of that, should council decide to terminate, we are prepared to flip the switch on some additional resources on the city website that can also assist residents in the selection of their retail electric provider, because it is complicated and it is not the easiest thing to navigate. So that is the conclusion of the staff report. I know Mr. Wu is available to answer any questions from the I-chooser side, if council has any.
All right. Council, do you have any questions for Ms. Leach or Mr. Wu? Mayor Protium?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Leach, for that presentation.
Yes.
Just to be clear, the city was not making any revenue from having—allowing I-chooser use city logo. Is that correct?
Correct.
And just like you mentioned, even if we do terminate this, I guess, allowing them to use the logo, they can still market to the residents, and still—they could still— and the resident could still choose to use I-chooser.
Correct.
Right?
It would just not have any of the city logo. The affiliation with the city would be pulled from all of those marketing materials.
Sure. Is there any other private—for-profit entity that uses our city logo?
No, sir.
None? Just I-chooser, right?
Correct.
And I did mention that it does kind of give a wrong impression that the city is endorsing —or endorsing this company when in fact we're not, right? We weren't from the beginning.
We have entered into a contractual agreement with I-chooser.
But were we actually endorsing them for the resident to use that I-chooser, or it's just an option that we were giving the residents?
It is an option that was given to the residents.
Okay. But there could be a misperception that city is actually endorsing I-chooser. Is that—
That is—that is possible.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Matthew?
Thank you, Mayor. Are they using our Capel city logo? Are they using our Capella city logo to advertise anywhere else outside of city of Capella?
I will have to defer to Mr. Wu on that, I do not know the answer.
Hopefully y'all can hear me. Is, Ms. Leach, can you hear me okay? Okay, thank you. Was the question about are we using the city of Capella logo outside of the city of Capella, or are we using other city logos, if I can clarify?
The first one, are you using city of Capella's logo to market outside of city of Capella?
I am sure that the city of Capella is listed as a partner to the Texas Power Switch program, and so, yeah, I think y'all are listed as one of the many cities in Texas we work with on the program.
Is that a concern for the staff?
The concern at the staff level is really just around not having control of the city's brand, the city's logo, on where it's placed, how it's marketed, how it's used. That's our concern. Having said that, we, I mean, we understand how iChooseR is using the city logo today, but that is our, that is our concern, is once you, once we've entered into this, then we lose a little bit of control about how then that logo is used. That's, that is our credibility, it's the brand that we have, and so it is very important.
So you also mentioned the service level.
Yes, sir.
You cannot guarantee, or you mentioned something about the service level. I was not clear. Can you give us an example of what you meant by that?
So when I, so earlier I had stated that iChooseR is an international company. So when we entered into the agreement back in 2020, they were still an international company. What has changed recently, I would say within the last six or eight months, is much of the Texas presence is being shifted away from Texas. And so from a customer service standpoint and the service levels that are being provided to us and to our customers, on behalf, the residents on behalf of us, we are concerned about what that future will look like from a service level standpoint, knowing that some of the resources have been shifted away. Now, Mr. Wu is here, and so as I mentioned, he is based in Austin, so iChooseR is not without a Texas presence.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Yes, are we receiving complaints from residents about their performance?
We've received a couple complaints related to perception around, or misunderstanding around the rate that was offered from the auction. And so I believe there was a, their belief was that it was the lowest rate, and then when I go onto the website for Power to Choose, and I see a lower rate, you told me this was the lowest rate, and that is, that is not what iChooseR has marketed. It is a misperception of what that product and service is, but we have received a couple of those complaints, yes.
And I can understand that, that that would be an issue, because when it was brought forth before council, it was that they would be negotiating the lowest possible rate they could get.
Correct.
But that it would not necessarily be the lowest that's available.
And frankly, the lowest rate that's available may not be the best rate for you as the individual consumer.
Yeah.
And so I think they've been clear about that piece, but when you ask about which complaints have we received, we have received complaints that I think are just based on a misunderstanding of what that is.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Is it okay if I respond to two of the questions as well? Yes, please.
Are we okay having Mr. Wu speak? It's not a public hearing, and it's not a public... Councilmember Carol. You could just...
This is your meeting, you get to run it, you're the council, it's not a public hearing.
Okay, I'm asking, okay, then I'm asking the council's opinion if they'd like to hear him speak.
If they have a question.
Councilmember Carol, did you have a question or a comment? You raised your hand.
No, I was just gonna make a motion.
What?
I was gonna make a motion.
Councilmember Hill?
Can I ask Mr. Wu to address some of the misconceptions that may have been leading to complaints to the city?
Yes, you may. Mr. Wu.
Thank you very much, councilmember and mayor. So just a couple of quick notes, we do really appreciate the partnership with the city of Capella over the past three years. We're happy to say that we've helped a lot of households, we think, over the course of that time. Related to the complaints, I would say honestly, that's an example of the customer service we do intend to provide via the program, which is, that has not changed, is we have customer service available to help folks who are trying to switch, trying to understand what their current energy costs are and what their potential new energy costs would be. Those services actually have been served by a call center, you know, outside of the Texas market. That's continuing, and so we hope really there will be no, like, change in the service levels to Capella residents who are looking at the program. In terms of the lowest rate, yeah, thank you for that opportunity, yeah, we do try very carefully to not promise or guarantee that this is, the program is able to get the lowest rate available. Again, because of the really, I would say, consumer protections we're looking for and safeguards we're looking for in the winning retail electric provider and plan that is offered, those are plan variables that help to, again, give people certainty over what their expected energy costs are going to be, as well as transparency simplicity. So those are all part of what we go out and try to get on behalf of folks in Capella and other communities in Texas. We would appreciate the opportunity to continue the partnership with you all. The program is no cost to the city of Capella. We really do think even if it helps a handful of households, it could still be valuable. And I do want to note that we provided some positive customer feedback and testimonials to councilmembers, and, you know, we'll just hope you will keep that in mind. Those are pretty recent quotes from folks in Capella who have participated and gotten a lot of value out of. Again, this no-cost program the city is offering. Thank you very much for the time, and let me know if you have any more questions I can help with.
Thank you, Mr. Wu. Mr. Hill, do you have any other?
I did not.
Okay. Councilmember Neves.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question, I know several of the council members up here were not on council at the time that this, this went into effect, so I'm kind of asking for a little bit of historical context to kind of understand, if you will. I guess my first question is, was staff or council approached by iChooseR to enter into this agreement initially?
Yes.
Okay, all right, excellent. And I understand that the reason why that, that council decided to enter into the agreement with iChooseR was obviously, you know, to try to provide some clarity to the, you know, the very vast selection of plans and things like that, so just kind of simplify things for the citizens, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
All right, excellent. Has the city been approached by other companies to have a similar type of arrangement but unable to because we are partnered with iChooseR or in an agreement with iChooseR?
Personally, I have not had any contact with other aggregators, but I can't speak for anybody else.
I didn't know if that, that was something that was like a common thing, and I guess my, my last part of my question is, is that, you know, at this time was, iChooseR was the only option that was presented to council to consider going into an arrangement like this?
Yes.
Okay.
I think the better way to put it was the only one that was offered, so...
Yeah, and I just, I'm just trying to understand historical context around, you know, how this, you know, how the arrangement initially just came about, so thank you guys for that context.
No, and to your point, yes, you're correct. I think Councilmember Hill and I were the only two that were on the council at that time, so it's, it's been, it's been moving along. Next question was, or next comment was from Councilmember Walker.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question for Mr. Wu. Sir, whether or not your services are being advertised through Capella, through our water bill insert and that sort of thing, am I correct that, that anyone within the Encore footprint can go to your website and sign up for your service?
That is accurate.
Okay, and, and as I understand the way your service works, let's say that I'm with a particular retail electrical provider, I can give you my information of where I live and that sort of thing, and then you go into the wholesale market, and you take the number of households you represent, and you secure basically a wholesale electrical quote, and then you tell me what the rate is that you, that you got for me so I could compare it to the rate I already have, right?
That is correct as well.
Okay, so, and when you, when you present me with the rate that you've secured in the wholesale market, I'm not bound to accept your offer, I can stay with the retail electrical provider I'm with at that moment?
That is also accurate, yeah, it's no obligations to proceed, no cost to register, and really find out what the Texas Power Switch quote would be.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? Mr. Carol?
Thank you, Mayor. Based on the fact that there's no financial cost nor, nor financial benefit for the city, and to, I concur with the idea that we are wanting to control our brand and have more control over that in particular, so having no opinion on the effectiveness of iChooseR or not, I would move to approve item nine J as written.
We have a motion for nine, for item nine, or J, excuse me. Do I have a second? Councilmember Neves, all in favor?
Discussion.
Discussion, I'm sorry, I was trying to cut one there. Councilmember Hill?
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to how this all came about, you know, it was presented by staff, and it seemed like a very reasonable service that we could pass on to our residents, because if you're not familiar with, you know, Power to Choose or Energy Yoga, and if you've ever tried to navigate those sites, it can be a little difficult, especially if you don't know your usage, kind of what categories you fall in, your high, your low, because you can get charged for using more than your allotted, you know, say, thousand kilowatt hours. So this is a way for residents to get a competitive price and not have to know all the nuances of the system. So we felt that that was a reasonable thing to do, and we weren't endorsing them, we were just allowing them to, to piggyback on, you know, our water, our, you know, water bills. So I didn't have an issue with it, I thought it was a good idea, and I know people have benefited, still benefited, and I imagine, you know, as this cycles through, we'll continue to see that, you know, the numbers, I don't think they're always going to decline, because, you know, people are not necessarily going to re-up with their energy providers, because they'll see that rate bump, and you get that notice, and then you jump back in the pool again, and you go to the iChooseR website. So I'm in favor for it, and, you know, down the road, if something should change that makes us feel very uncomfortable with the company, then, you know, we sever ties.
Councilmember Neves.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Hill, I want to say I appreciate the perspective on that. I guess the thing that I do get hung up on is that, whether it appears to or not, I do think that, you know, by having their logo on our, you know, on their letterhead, if you will, when, you know, they're going out and stuff, it does give them a competitive advantage, if you will, you know, I, you know, sort of, you know, I own my own business, if I had the opportunity to have the city of Capella's logo on my business, it would probably give me a competitive advantage as well in terms of how things could optically look. So I do want to say that, you know, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to vote to terminate the affiliation, but that is not a saying that they're doing a poor job, it is solely just for the fact that I do agree with the fact that I do think that the city needs to control its logo, and, you know, I think that it is fair for iChooseR to, you know, kind of be in the same boat as everyone else and market to our citizens just like any other company like them would, and may the best company win, if you will.
Councilmember Walker.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to add that, you know, on the one hand, I think a few years ago, there were probably fewer power aggregators as well, it was a little bit more of a novel concept, at least in my experience. And I would just encourage everyone, all of our citizens, to, you know, look at powertochuse.org, which is the official, you know, state-run site, look at iChooseR, spend the time, you know, it's a couple of hours, but you can save a lot of money in relation to what you might be paying today if you just do a little research and, and spend the time to look for that better rate. And, you know, to the extent that, you know, you don't have to have the city's logo, you know, featured in any way with respect to as a partner of this particular company, there may be other companies, other retail electrical providers or other aggregators that at any given time, any given month, when you go into the market, might offer a better price than what iChooseR could get. There may be some other times when iChooseR is offering the best price. It's a competitive market, and the rates change all the time, so the best thing to do is to look and to do your research and to try to get the best price you can for yourself and your family. Having said that, I support staff's recommendation, because I, I wouldn't want other companies coming to us, providing different services, and asking us to allow them to feature our logo on their website, or to feature us as a partner of their service either. So I support the staff's recommendation on this.
So I'm, Councilmember Matthew.
Thank you, Mayor. iChooseR is listed on city's website today, correct?
Yes, Texas Power Switch, it's under Texas Power Switch is what it'll be, because that's the program.
If we terminate this contract today, we will continue to list them in our website, correct?
No, sir. That is part of the agreement, is, as part of the marketing arm, that they are listed on our website.
How will the residents know this company that they can use?
So one of the things, so if, and I didn't mention this earlier, so one of the things that staff is prepared to do, so if council approves the termination this evening, we will be working on a resource page on our website that will have some additional resources, so Councilman Walker referenced the TexasPowerToChoose.org, .gov, I think it's .gov, along with some other resources to help our residents kind of navigate the landscape of all of the retail electric providers and all of the plans that are offered. If you go to the Public Utility Commission website, all of the 200-plus aggregators are listed, you can click through there, and there are different classes, so not all of them are apples-to-apples comparisons with what iChooseR offers in terms of services, but there, there are certainly many aggregators out there that do the same thing.
Okay, thank you.
Right. I'm gonna, I normally don't speak, and since I don't get a vote, you normally get to hear my opinion, but I'm going to concur with Councilmember Hill, one of the two members that was voting for this back in 2018 or 19. I'm a current happy user of iChooseR. I have a property that is not subject to an aggregator, and it takes me hours to go through and figure out where my best plan is. And the one thing I learned is there's a big difference between a long-term plan giving you the best rate over time versus a short-term spot rate, which is potentially what we're hearing here. So I haven't heard of a, of a case where iChooseR has misused the city logo, so I'm, that doesn't concern me nearly as much as the eventuality, and all of the conditions that we chose back five, six years ago, I think, are still valid, but obviously, the will of the council is paramount. Do we have any other comments tonight? All right, I want to be clear on item J. This is a resolution approving the termination. So if you vote for item J, you're voting to terminate the resolution. If you vote against item J, you're voting to continue the agreement. So this is one of those negative votes that the city attorney tells us not to do, so it's, it's placed here before us. So a vote for terminates the con- So, a vote for terminates the contract, and a vote against continues the contract. Is everybody clear? All right. Seeing no other further comments, all in favor of item J? Oh, I'm sorry, I need a motion. May I have a motion, please? I have a motion from.
You already had a motion.
Oh, that's right. We were in the middle of discussion. So, who told me I needed a motion? Okay, I'm sorry. We do have a motion. We do have a second. We finished discussion. So, all in favor? Please say aye.
Walker, Carroll, Neves, Jen, Matthew, in favor? Opposed? Hill, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leach. Thank you, Mr. Wu. Item number 10. This is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. And persons wishing to speak during this public hearing must sign the register and list your home address. You will be called to speak in the order that you have registered. Public hearings are limited to five minutes per speaker. And I'm gonna ask Mary, Ms. Boswell, to please read this into the record for me.
Yes, sir. Item number 10 is a public hearing. Consider approval of a zone change request from PD 108 R5R-H to PD 108 R5R2-H to allow for an 8,664-square-foot building addition and associated parking to the Capella Service Center, located at 816 South Capella Road. Excuse me. Good evening, mayor and council. In 2023, council decided to approve funding to build a new service center building and remodeled the existing building. This is the case before you this evening. So, the existing service center is shown here in purple, and the yellow represents other structures covered outside storage areas within the property. The new 8,600-square-foot building, coming in here in blue, will be located directly in front of the existing service center. To accommodate this new building, some existing parking will be removed. These will be relocated on-site with the construction of additional parking, some off the driveway from Capella Road, and the remainder connecting to the existing parking area interior to the site to the north. So, part of the fire lane is proposed to be abandoned, since this proposed building will be constructed over it. This will be done by plat. A pedestrian walkway will be constructed, connecting the new building to Life Safety Park and another from Life Safety Park to the new parking area at the service center. The site plan identifies the new building proposed in blue, which will house office space, collaboration spaces, a meeting room, restrooms, and a break room. Moving these functions from the existing service center in purple will allow for the remodel of the existing building to accommodate much-laid locker rooms, crew facilities, traffic management facilities, and storage areas. The plan also includes flexible staging, sleeping quarters for staff as part of the winter weather and emergency protocols. So, with the development of this site, there'll be approximately 20 trees removed in order to construct the building and associated parking. There will be 22 new trees planted with additional shrubs, grasses, ground cover, and perennials. In addition to the plantings around the new parking area, additional landscaping will be provided in the outdoor courtyard. So, the northwest portion of the new building will also contain a bioswale that will be used as an educational tool for classes attending Life Safety Park. Whoops. So, a bioswale, just to kind of give you a heads-up of, because I had to look it up as well.
Well, that was gonna be my next question anyway, so.
So, a bioswale is a long channel or trench that has vegetation, such as grasses, flowers, and shrubs, and soil mulch or stones to slow down rainwater and filter out pollutants. So, essentially, it's a natural way of filtering out pollutants. These pollutants include things like litter, motor oil, and excess fertilizers from lawns. The prefix "bio" refers to the living vegetation, while the root word "swale" means a low or hollow place that is often wet. So, here you can see that you will have an indented area where there will be rocks at the bottom, vegetation in between to capture that water and filter it out. So, the building itself will be approximately 8,664 square feet, rectangular in shape. The building will be a combination of mostly brick with some EPIS and fiber cement architectural wall panels with storefront-framed entryways and metal canopies. So, this is a rendering of the building with the bioswale out front. Tall windows of the building, tall windows will also make up the northern portion of the building with transom windows located above the canopies to allow natural light into the conference room. The other elevations will also have tall windows evenly spaced to allow for light. The brick is proposed to mimic that used at Life Safety Park. There will be one enclosed, there will be one enclosed corridor that attaches the new building to the existing building and a fenced-in outdoor courtyard between the two buildings. So, this is a zoning change request. So, we did send out notices within 200 feet, additional courtesy notices within 800 feet. We had no written responses. We did have two phone calls, basically asking what was happening. So, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the request with the following conditions. One, that there may be additional comments during detailed engineering review. Two, that the final plat needs to be filed showing the revised fire lanes and easements. And three, PD conditions. A, to allow the landscaping as proposed. B, the changes to the building elevations can be administratively approved by the Director of Community Development. And C, to approve the site plan as presented. So, this is the end of my presentation. We do have additional staff if you have any questions.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Mary, you made a statement, and I probably misheard you, but go back a couple of slides to the front view of the, there. Did I, did you call that the bioswale in the front of the building?
Yes.
I thought that was in the northeast corner. Or northwest corner.
Well, the entrance to that building.
Okay.
This is the bioswale.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I had my directions wrong. Thank you very much. Council, any questions? This is a public hearing, and we had no one sign up to speak. So, seeing no further comments, I will accept a motion. Councilmember Neves?
Thank you, mayor. Just wanna say, I'm just really excited about this project. That area of our town and service needs a little bit of love, so I'm really excited to move forward with this. And with that being said, I move to close the public hearing and approve agenda item 10 with the conditions as listed.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Protem John, seconds? Any discussion? I'll ask this time. Seeing none, all in favor?
Walker, Carroll, Neves, Jen, Matthew, Hill in favor? None opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Boswell. Item number 11 is the city manager reports on project updates, future agendas, and direction from the work session. Mr. Land?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Mayor and council, just a few announcements this evening. To begin with, Capella Connects: Neighbors Helping Neighbors is scheduled for Saturday, April 13. This is the third annual event. We have a lot of volunteers signed up, and we have numerous projects. I believe Mindy mentioned today that the project number is down to 50, just based on some analysis. But if you're interested and wanna sign up and provide some additional neighbor helping neighbor services in our community, April 13, and you can still go and sign up online. Fun Food and Grooves? It's scheduled for the Grove on, it's a wrong date here. Sorry. Yeah. It was scheduled for March 8, but that guaranteed that it rained that day. So, anytime we talk, the reason I laugh, because anytime we talk about doing Fun Food and Grooves, it's pretty much guaranteed to rain. So, we're gonna move on from there. South Belt Line. More importantly about South Belt Line, the contractor tells us that it is possibly going to have, be open in a few weeks. And we are working on a date for a ribbon cutting. So, be looking for that announcement here within the next week or so. Dart is currently working on the Freeport Parkway Crossing, so if you've noticed construction down there. The closing at Moore Road will be on, coming, I have pulled an old sheet. That is what the problem is. Guess what, mayor? Let me, hold on just one second. I'm gonna pull up a fast sheet real quick. If y'all wanna go ahead, and I'll come back to me.
Why don't we suspend the rules, and I'll move on to item number 12 for just a, oh.
Thank you.
Ashley comes to the rescue.
All right, here we go. Duck Pond Ribbon Cutting, April 2, 10 a.m.
I've got that here.
Yeah, well, I just took it from you. South Belt Line, as I said earlier, Dart's currently working on Freeport, as well as the Royal Lane. The Hanger Art Annex, the remodel is complete, and furniture from Moore Road is being moved over to that facility. Woodhurst, the utility instruction, construction is continuing on from the cul-de-sac to Duck Pond Park. And the Village Parkway Ground Storage Tank Rehab continues with power washing the exterior and cleaning the interior. And I believe some of y'all were able to take a tour of the Village Parkway, correct? Okay, good. All right, thank you. And I apologize, mayor. That was purely on me pulling the wrong piece of paper.
Quite all right.
That concludes my report. Item number 12, Mayor and Council reports on recent and upcoming events. My first item was on the Duck Pond Park, but since he's covered that one, we'll skip it. Budget season will be kicked off with the Budget Town Hall on Thursday, April 4, at 7 p.m. here at Town Center. You're invited to engage and provide feedback about major projects for the upcoming fiscal year. And a once-in-a-lifetime event, our Solar Eclipse Watch Party, which is now called Total Eclipse in the Park and hosted by the Community Experiences, will be on Monday, April 8, from noon to 3 p.m. at Andy Brown Park. We are cautioned to avoid driving as much as possible, as the Dallas-Fort Worth area is expecting 1.5 million visitors for the event. I have a personal statement to make here, and that is that this council has been approached several times to make statements that extend well beyond our own sphere of influence. We're honorably elected by the citizens of Capella to administer the business of the City of Capella. Asking this council to make statements, proclamations, or issuing resolutions regarding international affairs is quite beyond the individual responsibilities of local elected authorities. However, just to be very clear, I certainly do hope and pray for an end to all terrorism worldwide without exception, and I hope and pray for humanitarian aid to be provided to all those who are in need. And I hope the council will join with me in these thoughts. Thank you very much. And council, any other comments? Seeing none. Item number 13, Public Service Announcements Concerning Items of Community Interest With No Council Action or Deliberation Permitted. Seeing none. There was no necessary action from executive session, so therefore, there being no further business before this body. We are adjourned at 8:54 p.m.